Good evening. My name is Terrence Foye. Welcome to the Board of Fire Commissioners Newcastle Fire District Number One. Tonight is a work session. The title of tonight's work session is Modernization and Consolidation of Fire Operations Project. Today's Thursday, April 7th, 2022. It's approximately 6:30 PM. We're located 491 King Street in Chappaqua, New York. I will call this meeting to order. All the commissioners are in attendance. Commissioner Smith, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, this is the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a moment of silence for all the first responders in the Ukraine right now, and keeping in your thoughts and prayers, any and all aid workers from the United States who are assisting right now during the Russo-Ukrainian war. Thank you. Please be seated, everybody. Everyone's in attendance, and I just want to make sure that the residents of the fire district know who's in that room and who's joining us virtually, if you will, via Zoom. First, we have Bob Mitchell of Mitchell Associates Architects. We have Joseph Motifery from JMC. We have Lynn Winek of Wendell's Marks. We have our attorney is here, Michael Legori from Hogan Rossi. We have Carrie, of course, facilitating all of the technical aspects of tonight's meeting from the Newcastle Community Media Center. And we have Ms. Lynn Lambert from our community liaison committee here. Welcome everyone to this meeting. So having said that, I'm just a brief opening statement. It was, I believe, the middle of January of this year. The board decided to pause and postpone moving forward with the referendum regarding the building project. We cited several things. We were in the middle of an uptick in terms of COVID, so we cited three specific things that prevented us from moving forward effectively. And it was COVID restrictions, inability to effectively conduct meetings. And then finally, we recognized we needed more time to plan. And I think the board made a good decision just to pause things to slow down. And having said that, we're here this evening to have a work session to get an update from essentially our A team that's responsible for this building project. And that's, we're going to lead off with Bob Mitchell of Mitchell Associates. But before he starts, I had a brief conversation with Bob earlier today, and I thought it was very, very important, and I hope that the other commissioners would agree that Bob's going to be speaking to very, very specific needs and requirements, the how and why we're doing the project. And I have great faith in Bob and his skill. He's an award-winning architect. He's been in the business longer than most, and I'm very pleased now to toss this over to Bob. Now, originally, Bob, before you start, I had asked all of our presenters to keep it to five or seven minutes. And then after speaking with Bob earlier today, I said, Bob, take as much time as you need, because this is important. This is the most important information that's going to be put out, is from our architect. And then it's going to be supported then by our engineers from JMC. And then Lynn will tie it up with respect to the legal aspects and the regulatory requirements and the great work we're doing with the town of Newcastle to push this site plan forward. So having said that, Bob, it's all yours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start by introducing Peter Signerelli. His picture shows up here. He is my associate here and is the project manager for the production of the contract documents for this project. So I'm going to share my screen and use a PowerPoint to see which one am I sharing? I can't tell which one I'm sharing. Let's see if I'm sharing the right thing. What do you see?
That said.
PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, great. Now, I think I have to reverse this. Okay, I think you have the show showing. So I'm Bob Mitchell, Mitchell Associates Architects. Our firm, the sole practice of our firm is the design of fire stations. For 28 years, we've done over 184 public safety projects, and 63 of them have to do with renovating. By the way, this is the only slide where we talk about us. We have a full-time staff, all of whom work solely on the design of fire stations. They've done individually as many as 90 fire stations. We're very committed to the task of designing and educating on designing our lecture nationally. And one of our members, Ken Gale, sits on the NFPA 1550 Committee, which is dedicated to firefighter safety. So firefighter service occupational safety. The building, as you know, was built in two phases, 1954 and the addition in 1979. And what has been being proposed since 2016 is to expand it, as shown in this image. And I'm going over some of this ground, because I think there are people here who have not been party or privy to this previously. There have been quite a series of studies done. I myself did a study back in 2003, so that's 19 years ago. Ralph Associates did a study in 2008. By the way, even in what was studied as far back as the three was expanding the building more or less in the manner that we're still talking about doing it. The need to expand was known 19 years ago. In 2013, Emergency Vehicle Response, which is a consulting firm that is focused primarily on apparatus and the way that it delivers service, did a study and in 14 supplemented that study. And 15, we were brought back in and did programming and schematic design of what it is that's being proposed, though what is being proposed has been slightly modified over time. The EBR report recommended that the station should be modified so that it incorporates all of the presently required regulations regarding fire protection and building codes, and that the building addition should be set back further from the roadway to have a safe apron for modern apparatus. They also said that whatever was going to be done, it should build in contemplation of the future. Additional space, base space should be provided to accommodate future needs. And they said that that should mean eight, seven or eight vehicles, and that was their assessment. I emphasize their work is determining the vehicular needs of fire service organizations. There should be drive-through bays, adequate storage, decon capability, and bunking for up to 10 people to contemplate the future and some things that we'll talk about that are more near term that relate to bunking. Well, you know, the building is from 54. The size of apparatus and the associated materials required, equipment and tools required to provide fire service has grown significantly in that time. And it's resulted in your base being inadequate in size. As you can see here, these are not safe spaces, and the district has a responsibility under OSHA. There's the OSHA consensus standards and general duty clause that says that you must provide a place of employment, and I need to explain that volunteers are considered employees from the point of view of OSHA, free from the recognized hazards that are causing or likely to cause death or serious physical harm. So that the shortcomings in the existing bays and other things that we'll talk about are not just inconveniences. They are violations of the obligations under OSHA. A modern fire station has plenty of room around each vehicle. You see that the standard in that diagram is our standard. There's no, it has not been codified, though NFPA is talking about codifying it. But the eight-foot spacing between vehicles is our standard, so that even if both doors are open on adjacent vehicles, people can get through. And getting through is significant, because when the alarm goes off, people are in a hurry, and injuries can happen in stations. And we even had a client where there was a fatality prior to the, this fatality precipitated them building a new bay to provide more space. The firefighter tripped and ended up under the vehicle and was killed. So firefighter safety and health is a paramount issue, cancer being the number one issue, injuries, sleep deprivation, which some people may be skeptical about that with regard to volunteers, but we can talk more about that. Exposure to pathogens, unaddressed stress due to the kind of work they do. Noise, meaning hearing loss, PTSD because the stresses remain unaddressed, and suicide, which is, has an extraordinarily high rate in the fire service. So cancer risks, polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, PHs are the single most prevalent exposure for firefighters. But all of these other things happen at a fire scene in this time, in this day and age. This is not the house of our grandparents, where things were made of oak and pine and cotton and wool. Anybody who shops at Ikea or anyplace like that knows that you don't know what the materials are that are burning until they burn, and these are the things that are measured in the smoke at a fire. So NIOSH and the U.S. Fire Service published a study that said cancers of the respiratory, digestive, and urinary systems accounted for most, mostly for the higher rates of cancer seen in the study population. The study population was just under 30,000 firefighters. The higher rates suggest that firefighters are more likely to develop these cancers. Population of firefighters in the study had a rate of mesothelioma two times greater than the rate in the U.S. population at whole. This is a real issue, and it affects your volunteers, who are your neighbors. There's also there's also biological risk. They handle people. They go into places that could be contaminated. MRSA is an active risk amongst the people in the fire service. So what do we do about it? The station needs to have a real commitment to the task of decontamination and the task of having hot zone, cold zone, which is how we refer to it, separation between the places in the building where contamination happens, which is predominantly the apparatus bay, but it is also the support spaces around it and the living spaces, so that the people in the living spaces are not continuing to collect toxins that came into the station with them. So the task of decontamination starts, if you look at this illustration, with a space for gross decontamination, a space for high-tech laundering, a place for firefighters to shower immediately upon getting to the station. The rule of thumb, or however you want to put it, is shower within the hour. The particles that we're discussing are small enough that they pass through the turnout gear, through their clothing, and get on their skin. And if they're not gotten off rapidly, they end up going into their bodies through the skin into the subdermal tissue, where the only exit pathway is through your endocrine system and your blood system, and it leads to different cancers like pancreatic cancer. The other pathway is for the garments that they wear to end up here, back in an enclosed ventilated storage area, having been cleaned. So these are requirements under NFPA. And this is what we see in fire stations all over the country, older stations. We see the meager attempt at decontamination. We even see the ice that they're going to use to cool the water that they're going to drink, so they're going to consume the ice, is right in this space where all the contamination is occurring. The image on the left here is what you have today for decontamination. It is wholly inadequate. And the image on the right is a recent station. It's the type of thing that you'll have. So NFPA requires that you have these facilities, and you do not at this time have them. So what does the, what do these spaces look like? This is the space for gross decontamination. The first space that you get in. There's nothing particularly fancy. I mean, there's nothing fancy at all about these spaces. They're working spaces for the purpose of cleaning and protecting. So once you leave the gross decontamination space, you end up in the space where the laundering occurs. You have these high-capacity washer extractors. You have residential-style washers that are set to run at very high temperatures. And we can, if anybody has questions, we can talk about why that is. And then you have cabinets for drying the turnout gear that ventilate directly out of the building, because up to 50% of these hydrocarbons are still in the fabric after the laundering. They're not visible. The sooty stuff gets washed off, but there's all the others still in it. And then the visual firefighters wash in this space. They have lockers where they can have clean clothing. They come and they wash. It's not much unlike what you would see at a Gold's Gym or someplace like that. It's gender neutral. They can go into the spaces. They can strip down, wash, get into clean clothing. Their dirty clothing goes back into the laundering and goes into the high-temperature washing. At the time that your building was built, this is what a firefighter had for protective clothing. And today, this is what a firefighter has. It's significantly more stuff, requires more space to store. It requires special storing, because in addition to protecting the firefighter, it's a significant investment, and that investment needs to be protected, as does the firefighter. So on the left, you see where your turnout gear is, in the contaminated apparatus bay, near the exhaust pipes, in a place where no, people cannot safely put on their turnout gear without being, the risk of being bumped by a fire truck. And on the right, you see what this space is supposed to look like, and you see the reference NFPA standard about it being an enclosed ventilated storage space. So this is just another example of one. Breathing air. Breathing air is essential to firefighters. It needs to be properly handled. The image on the right, in terms of refilling and maintaining the air. And what you have on the left is you have your piece of filling equipment in the back of the bay, because you do not have space in the building to accommodate it. Additionally, you do not have the proper means to clean it. These masks that go back on people's faces have toxic materials on them. The best you can do is wash it in a slop sink, but what you should be washing it in is a machine that's designed for that purpose, and that will be included in the new building. Yeah. So it's simple. It's a very straightforward process, and it results in the equipment being clean and ready to be put back on a firefighter. Mission control, the operation when there's an alarm, the operation when there's training. It should look like the room on the right, which is in the recently renovated Purchase Fire Station, where they have good visual control of the frontline of the apparatus, of the apron and the street. And you do not have that currently in your building, and you will when the renovation occurs. Training. You don't train until you get it right. You train until you can't get it wrong. It's like a military model. What your volunteers do is extraordinarily dangerous, and they have to be well-trained, which requires repetitive tasks. So you need to make it convenient for them to do these things. And that means integrating as many training features as you can in the building. So on the spur of the moment, or on the basis of something that didn't go well at a fire scene, they can practice corrective measures to reduce the risk to them and to reduce the risk to the community. This should be at the station, not someplace they have to drive away to, to a training center, for several reasons. One, out of courtesy to the firefighters, they shouldn't be expected to add to their already busy life and busy time in the department, travel time to go train when these things could happen in the station. And the other is that if it's easy and convenient, they'll do it. They'll be doing it in the station, so they'll be in the station if the alarm goes off. Maintenance of the material. You have all sorts of things that are used in the fire service that need to be repaired, lubricated, maintained. You do not have a proper space to do that. Yours is the one on the left. The one on the right is, you know, so I think it's clear. You can see what it ought to be. And then in the apparatus bay, the two images on the left, they're not your station, but your station has the same difficulty. You cannot lift the cab and make repairs on a vehicle like you see in the right, in the bay. So either the repairs have to be done out in the weather, or the vehicle has to be taken away in order to be fixed. Storage. It's critical to have proper places to store everything. First, so that they're properly cared for. And second, if you don't have a proper place to store them, they end up on the floor of the apparatus bay where they become trip hazards. And as is the case in the building I talked about earlier, whether there was the fatality, it was a trip accident that resulted in the firefighter being under the wheel of the truck as the truck moved forward. So specific spaces thought out for what's happening in them with capacity to absorb more things in the future need to happen. Hose is another example. The room on the right, there's racks for hose. There's a machine for washing the hose. It needs to be washed. There's a machine for drying the hose. There's a device for coiling the hose to put it back on the rack. In your station, the stuff is just crammed in wherever it can be fit. Bunking. Bunking is planned for this station. You do not have career firefighters sometime within the life of the building. That will change. Your building will be here for more than 75 years. In Purchase, which is one of our clients, they have a live-in program. There are people in the department, volunteers, who grew up in the community, can't afford to find housing in the community. They want to remain active in the department, and they're allowed to sleep in the station. They're there. In the station, when the alarm goes off, benefits the community, benefits the firefighter. Offices. You really have inadequate office space. There is, this is an active, complex business that occurs. And there's lots of documentation that has to be done, whether it's documenting training, or budgets, or repairs, or inventories. All of these things have to happen, and people need places to do this work. So in the design of a station, we have priorities that have to be followed, inefficient operation, dirty-clean separation. This has to do with the toxics, toxins and pathogens. A proper decon laundry, proper way to care for the self-contained breathing, self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA. Proper bathrooms that are gender neutral, gender flexibility in general. The, there is a significant rate of growth in female participation in the fire service. And you need to accommodate that and invite it. The building needs to be ADA compliant. You need to allow for onsite training. Recruitment and retention is a significant issue that should be of concern to you and should stimulate a lot of your thoughts about why to do this project. There's been a great decline in the number of volunteer firefighters in the country. In this, this is from Governing Magazine. In Pennsylvania, the decline from 300,000 volunteers in the 70s to 38,000 in 2018. North Carolina had a 22% decline in volunteers in two years alone. If you do not have volunteers, you have paid firefighters. Salaries and benefits for paid firefighter are in the $90,000 to $100,000 range with the benefits. That is more or less equivalent to the cost of amortizing a bond for a fire station in the amount of $2 million. One firefighter, almost $2 million worth of construction is offset by their salary, and the salaries will inflate over time. So it is in the best interest of the community to support active programs, to maintain interest in volunteering, including inviting college students to perhaps live in the station if they have a background in fire service and want to live in the station while going to college, helping them to afford. Okay, you have obligations under laws and codes. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but I just want to give you a sense of it. The International Building Code defines a fire station as category four, highest-risk category, which means it has to be one of the last buildings standing whenever any kind of disaster occurs. And this requires many construction features of robustness that have to be undertaken and have cost implications. I already spoke about the OSHA consensus standard and general duty clause. NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, sets standards for the fire service and for many other things. And many of these standards become incorporated through other codes into law. They have standards. And I mentioned that one of the people in our firm sits on this committee. There are standards for the cleaning of protective clothing that requires something like the decon laundry, disinfection. Disinfection of the station. That janitor's closet is the extent of your ability to disinfect the station. You have to have areas to clean things. You have to have infection control strategies for all the rooms in the building. The building surfaces are old. They don't tend to be easy to decontaminate it, not compared with new materials. You're going to have, this is a very clear statement they're making here. The apparatus bay contains carcinogenic byproducts of combustion, bloodborne pathogens, excrement, and vomit. So cleaning and disinfecting is important, and a real commitment to providing the method to do that is important. So these all go on. Training. You have an obligation to train your people and also to promote physical fitness. Having a physical fitness room in the station is a real incentive for that to happen. You have to have this training program. This goes on and on and on. But this, I think, is, I guess, this may be the last one of these statements, and I think it's a good one to pay attention to. NFPA is saying firefighting is among the most physically demanding occupations, performing demanding physical work in high temperatures in heavy protective gear that maintains a near saturation interior humidity, long working shifts, and the need to ramp up to full speed on a moment's notice to contribute to, all contribute to the potential for injury. Cardiac arrest is arguably either the first or the second highest cause of death in the fire service, and it's tied to that paragraph. So one of the core requirements according to NFPA is an exercise training program that is available to all members. And I would add, positioned in a way to make it easy for them to participate in. You have obligations under the Civil Rights Act to address, to provide gender equity in the station, which is not occurring at this time. ADA compliance, your building does not comply. You have, well, you're familiar with these problems that exist in the station. The last thing having to do with these regulations is the building is required to have safe exiting. And you, you don't have what is considered safe exiting at this point. People have to exit certain spaces through the apparatus bay, which means exiting through a place of higher hazard. You have exiting on the outside over, through an open grated fire escape. These things are going to be corrected. Now, I'd like to say a little bit about mental health. These horrible headlines were all collected by me in less than one week. Firefighters are exposed to terrible things. When they come back to the station, the station needs to be inviting to them to sit with their coworkers and process what happened to them, because otherwise, they just go home with this. And there's numerous studies about mental health issues and high divorce rate amongst firefighters that they tie back to that. Liability issues are everywhere. You can see, this is maybe more than a week's worth of collection, but there is litigation going on everywhere, and your station has the ability to address these kinds of issues by providing the environment where training can occur and people can have a healthier mental life. So that part of the presentation's over. There's just a few more slides. This problem, this project is made up of renovation and new construction and costs $13 million for brick and mortar, round numbers. People have asked, what if you tore it down and built a new building? So if you built a brand-new building, the building could be somewhat smaller, because it would be more efficient, because we're attaching to an existing building on a complicated site for doing that. So I figure you can reduce the size of the building by 15%, but all of it will be built at the new construction. But all of it will be built at the new construction value. Whereas currently, you're doing renovation at less than a third of the cost per square foot. So you have the new construction, the cost of demolition. And in order to build a new building, you would have to vacate the site and find temporary operations, which probably aren't available, but based on recent jobs that we've done, it's something in the order of magnitude of a half million dollars to do that. So that if you built a new building instead of renovating and adding on to, your costs would be three million dollars higher. Now, in the current scheme for three million dollars less, you have more square footage. One might argue, well, we don't need every one of those square feet, but there's no workaround to get there. People have asked, why are there so many apparatus bays? This is the complement of vehicles that the fire department has. This is the nineteen-seventies bay, this is the proposed bay. There is one empty space. This space here is for the ladder truck to drive through, coming in from the back, rather than trying to back in off the King Street. So on day one, moving into this station, you have one spare space, which is a preferable position to be in than to have no spare space. And five or ten years later, find you need another piece of apparatus and don't have any place to put it. Cost of construction has averaged four point one percent from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-one, and then in two thousand twenty-one, more than that. We did that study in two thousand three, the cost per square foot is more than doubled in that time period. So what does that say? So from two thousand sixteen to the current scheme, the cost of new construction has escalated about thirty-four percent. But in the intervening time, the commissioners and, and the chiefs have worked on a scheme that reduces the renovation of the existing building so that the project construction cost increased by twenty percent over the six years from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-two, not the thirty-four percent that construction costs generally increased. So now that the current budget was developed in December before the decision to postpone construction is based on a spring twenty-two groundbreaking. At some point, we have to analyze what the implications are going to be of waiting another year to start. Now, the, the last slide, I think it's the last slide. Construction costs escalates at a much higher rate than the Consumer Price Index. Well, this isn't the consumer, higher rate than the Consumer Price Index at a much higher rate than the assessed value of the district increases. So that for each year that a project is postponed, what it's going to cost any taxpayer in town increases by something in the range of three point six percent. So there's nothing to be gained financially by delaying doing the project. And I believe that is the end of the presentation. So, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Bob. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the commissioners for comment and questions for Bob with, with respect to the briefing. Anybody?
I think it was a good presentation. It was right on the money. I, I, everything was explained.
I, I'll just add that I, I believe that our architect, Bob Mitchell, has provided us with compelling evidence that the needs and the requirements will force, force us to make a, a decision here in the near future regarding putting this forth. There, there's no doubt in my mind that this is a critical infrastructure project that needs to go forward. We can't delay. We will speak here in a few moments regarding some factors that are influencing the cost of the project. But if we can ask Bob, thank you to hang on, and we're going to jump right to Joe Modifary from JMC. He's going to give us a brief on the site plan, landscaping, everything below grade essentially, right, Joseph?
Yeah, well, at grade and below grade, everything outside the building from the building wall to the, to the curb and a little bit beyond. So as many of you know, our role was the civil engineer and landscape architect for the project or is the civil engineer landscape architect for the project. We worked with Bob Mitchell and Lynn Wining to obtain site plan approval from the Town Planning Board, which was granted sometime two thousand sixteen. You know, and basically the site improvements were to support many of the things that Bob had mentioned. Making sure that if he puts a new access somewhere or egress for the people in and out of the building, they have the proper sidewalks, et cetera, and then the the drive-in and drive-out bay that's in part in the new part of the building. So they drive in on Memorial Drive and drive out onto King Street, I believe. The way it operates. But so we were granted site approval by the planning board in two thousand sixteen. That site plan approval was subject to a number of conditions which we have been working to address by making revisions to plans and reports and things and submitting that information to the town as well as outside agencies such as the New York State DOT. Our initial submission was sometime in early two thousand twenty-one, we had, we had received some comments and had a meeting with Bob Cioli in November of two thousand twenty-one, where we reviewed his outstanding comments and made a updated revised submission just about, about a month ago or so. And we're waiting on his review and response to that, but we are fairly confident that we have been able to address all of the town comments. We are, as I said, NYSDOT, because both roads that you're on are state highways, we need DOT permits. So we are in stage two of that permit process. We have submitted some information to them related to responding to comments regarding stormwater and the sidewalk along the site frontage that the planning board in town asked us to explore as part of, was one of the conditions of site plan approval. So we're working through responses to that so that we can address or not address, depending on their responses to that information, some of their technical comments that they had. This project also included a subdivision where it was a merger of all the lots or the lot that the firehouse currently sits on with the lot that the animal hospital previously sat on. So once we have acceptance of that plat from Bob Cioli, we'll go through the process of filing that map with the county clerk. And, you know, then we go through all the process of getting the site plan signed by the planning board chairman and moving into the construction when the board is ready. And, you know, it's a, it's a basic update of where we are today, but we're hoping in the next you know, couple of months or so to have it all done and, you know, ready for construction, ready to at least start construction design when, I don't know if Bob has started that yet, but you know, move on to the next steps with you guys.
Thank you very mu- much, Joseph. Any comments or questions from the board for, for Joseph? Excellent. Moving on to Lynn, please. Lynn Winek from Wendell Marks.
Bobby, one, so as Joe and Bob had indicated, we had gotten site plan and subdivision approval back in twenty sixteen for the project. Those approvals are only good for a certain period of time. The planning board has been very good with addressing our requests for extensions of time. And I recently put in a, another request for an extension to be on the planning board meeting in, in April, on April nineteenth. And we're asking for another extension until October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. And all legal documents that are required separate and apart from the work that JMC is doing have been submitted to the Planning Board Council and to Bob Cioli, Planning Board Council has approved it, subject to a final sign-off from, from the town engineer. At this time, you know, we've asked them to expedite their review so that we can get signatures and provide the, the documents to the town and, 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 and wrap up the filing of the site plan along with Joe's, JMC's work that's being done right now.
Thank you, Lynn. Any questions for Lynn, questions or comments from the board for Lynn? Okay, thank, thank you very much. I've got to say that all the work that Bob Mitchell and Pete at Mitchell Associates and Joe and his team at JMC and certainly Lynn as well at Wendell Marks. This is, this is an A-team that's been working on this project now for years, and they've done a fantastic job. And thank, thank you very, very much for all that hard work. So we're going to jump into a broader discussion now. What's, what's the pleasure of the board? Should, should we ask Bob, Joe and Lynn to hang on while we continue, or should we permit them to drop? Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's fine. I, I just, I don't want to singularly make this decision myself. Having said that, we have a broader discussion now with, with respect to where we are and where we need to go. I think it's clear where we need to go. This is a critical infrastructure project that needs to be done. However, there's some things that we, there's some tasks that we have to conduct before we can bring this to a referendum. Having said that, I just want to remind the residents of the fire district, the board and our visitors here. By the way, several other key members of the community liaison committee have joined us since we started. Mr. John Russell's here, Bonnie Gallop and Lori Morton, welcome, please. Good to see you here. So there's several things that we need, we need to do, but I, I just kind of wanted to back up and remind everyone where we were. Again, I did mention it earlier, but, but it is worth mentioning. We postponed a referendum date that we previously scheduled. It would have been this past Tuesday, April fifth. There's no way we would have met that. Due to COVID-related restrictions, inability to conduct effective meetings and just recognizing we needed much more time to plan. In addition to that, we've established an advisory board called the Community Liaison Committee. We have some of the members here tonight. Again, thank you for being here. And I believe we have approximately ten members. Working with the CLC, we're going to identify and answer all questions and potential issues important to the residents and fire district regarding this project, germane to the project, addressing where we are now and where we need to go. We can't, we can't go backwards. This project's been ongoing since two thousand three, nineteen years now. It takes about twenty years to get a critical infrastructure project through, and we're almost there. So I just might caution all involved not to go backwards. We need to lean forward. We need to make some very, very tough decisions. We need to answer the questions. We need to figure out how to format those questions and answers and get the information out to the public. And then finally, without telling the public how to vote, because that's not what we do, we give the public the raw information and then we ask everyone to vote. After learning the information, after studying these issues, after believing and, and understanding that it's a critical, an important critical infrastructure project. If, if we can get the people to vote, I'm fairly confident this will pass. But if we don't, if, if we don't conduct the following or those crucial steps between now and referendum, we could perhaps revisit what happened in two thousand sixteen where it was unsuccessful, largely due to, let's just say, some, some, some errors, tactical or logistic or whatever. But I firmly believe this is an important critical infrastructure project and it needs to be done now because it's going to cost a lot if we don't. So having said that, a- as I said, we established the CLC, very, very important that we've done that. We're going to answer the questions and, and, and we're going to address other potential issues with respect to the project. Now, just opening up the larger discussion right now, and, and I will ask our, our capable treasurer, Robin Rizzo, to jump in at the appropriate time, but I just want to have a short discussion regarding the recent domestic and international events that may have direct impact on the project scope and costs. And I'm going to give some examples. We all know what we're talking about. Inflationary pressures, cost of goods, labor and materials, energy prices and interest rates. I would like to start with the interest rates. Robin, can you please just briefly talk about what's happened with the bond interest rates in the last couple of months and the impact it would have on servicing debt?
Sure. I spoke to Janine at Fiscal Advisors and based on our knowledge now, as opposed to when we first addressed our borrowing needs in late fall, she increased our projection by a quarter of a percent. She went from a three point two five interest rate to three point five zero, and that jump, as small as it seems to be, would increase the interest on our sixteen nine nine two bond about eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And of course, we don't know where the rates are going at this point in time, but we can only project with what we know today.
Right. So you know, Bob was talking about this before, and I'd like to hear from the other commissioners on this because this is a big issue. What if, what if it goes up another quarter point? Now, we're not just looking at, you know, eight hundred times two. That's a different number. And, and I asked Robin recently, just, just to keep a close eye on that and keep us informed, but it, I mean, with all these pressures, again, inflationary pressures. Inflation is at the highest rate in forty years right now. Cost of goods, if you can find the goods for, for construction, labor and materials, again, labor is going up, materials going up, and if you can find the materials. And then again, energy prices because of what's going on overseas and because of perhaps other issues here in the United States, energy prices are through the roof and they're not coming down anytime soon. And we already addressed the interest rates. So I, I would, I would urge this body just to consider that. And then I'll just, I'll just go ahead and mention one more thing, and then I'd like to have a discussion to see where the board of, how the board is thinking in terms of some things that we need to do, and I'll just mention what they are. So you know, future tasks to consider. And essentially, we need to get them on a, on a, on a calendar, I think. We need public relations assistance. Now, as everyone knows, our work with Wise Oak Strategies concluded. We thank them for the work. We learned an awful lot. We produced some great products and, and, and were, were better for the work with Wise Oak, but it became clear to the board that we need a public relations expert who can help us bring this home. They, they've got to be an expert in this. And, and so I, I And and so I think the board needs to put that as priority number one. We need to continue website development. We need to develop a social media presence if the board believes that that would be helpful because let's be honest, some social media presence is not very helpful. In fact, it can be damaging to an effort, so that's a tough one to discuss, I think. Setting a date for a referendum, conducting several public engagements with the assistance of our professional public relations assistants, our architects, our engineers and Lynn, our legal assistants. And then finally, conducting mailings and then urging the residents of the district to get out and vote after they've been delivered accurate information, real-time information about this project. So I'm going to leave it open to the board now to start the conversation with respect to where we're at and where we need to go. I've spoken enough for tonight.
You know, I, I would say that everybody should listen to the presentation given by Bob, Joe and Lynn. It's fantastic. It explains exactly why we need to move forward. So somehow we have to get that out to the three thousand homes in that we cover and buildings. I think that's important.
And so the Newcastle Community Media Center is covering this event. We don't have the social media presence to blast it out. Perhaps maybe we can speak with the Fire Department if we could shoot out a reminder, urge everyone to watch this presentation. I think that, I think this was a fantastic presentation by everyone. It brings everybody up to speed.
What, what about asking the town board to put it in their weekly newsletter with?
We can do that. In fact, Carrie can facilitate that. That's fantastic. That's a great idea. Can we put a link in there too where they can just click on it and launch it? That, excellent idea, thank you.
Well, I think we need to get a public relations assistance. We got to get somebody to help us, assist us in the mailings and time the mailings out just right. If we don't have that, I think we'll be spinning our wheels here. I mean, that, I also think we need to try to get the prices the best that we can, to present it to the public. This is what it's going to cost.
Thank you for bringing that up. Looking at all the pressures here, I, I think we need to revisit the cost of the project. We need to be sensitive to the interest rates. We may need to go back to Bob and say we need to run the numbers again. Maybe we need to move things around. I totally agree. How are we going to, how are we going to do that as a board?
Pull a letter together and see if he can come up with a better, best guess. I'm kind of curious about construction materials and if the architects have any idea, you know, if things are going to be in short supply further out we start this project. I mean, they're probably in short enough supply now, but will they get worse going forward? You know, like the cost of a cement block is X now, will it be X plus what next, next year?
Bob had mentioned earlier to me that we would have to run the numbers again. As, as soon as, if there's another tick up in terms of interest rates, we have to run the numbers again. They would reestimate the entire project, but I, 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 I'm just kind of thinking that, that maybe we need to relook at the project in terms of the total cost. And the reason why I say that is what, what we see here today. Carrie, can you pan over there? This is, this is what we have to date. This was after going into committee, the board and the chief staff. And this is the absolute maximum build out, if you will. And that, this came to sixteen million nine hundred thousand dollars, which has now increased a quarter point at a minimum. So we're already on this, yes.
Terry, I just ran some numbers here while you guys were talking.
Please, thank you.
You bet. So raising, raising the interest rate from three and a quarter to three and a half increases the annual payment by three point two percent, which in turn increases the amount of tax payment from the average home by two percent. So and that's just me doing it quickly here. I mean, I used Excel, I didn't use an app, but the the point is that this analysis can be done and the interest rate in and of itself is not a stunning cost impact on an annualized basis. But at the same time, we probably, well, no, we absolutely have to forecast because you can't know what the likely cost of construction would be starting a year later.
Correct. So I
Anybody who says they know, they don't know, they can't know.
You don't know. The, the interest rates could, could jump another quarter point next, next week. And we don't know that.
Right, well, I just ran it at three point five. Came up with what I told you.
So I get, I guess the question for the board, and I have my own, I have my own feelings on the issue. We're already over seventeen million dollars by at least eight, eight hundred thousand as, as Robin indicated. Do we need to, do we need to look at value engineering? Do we look at, do we need to look at performance contracting? Do we need to scale back on this?
I think we need to scale back.
I, I tend to agree.
I mean, it's just
But there's one thing that we have to do. We have to build the new firehouse as a standalone entity. It's, it's got to be done.
All, to what I could see, as Bob said, the decon and the turnout gear, all, all of that is on the first floor. First floor has to be mainly built out completely. Right, the second floor, I think we can work with. We could do things with maybe, I mean, maybe hold off on putting the bunks in. I mean, I think there's stuff there that we can wait on. I think, I mean, I don't see, I don't see that coastline with that, I don't, I don't see it.
Well, I, I'm, I would be a little more optimistic if we get the information out that the public would, would, would desire to see. For example, Robin had put together a spreadsheet that where every single person in the district can pull up and see what their tax load would be for this project. And for the average house, we know what it is. For the, for the more expensive house, we know what it is. But I know exactly what my tax load is going to be because it's listed by, by, we're able to do it by address. It's, it's equivalent right now, well, taking away the quarter point increase. I think it was seventy seven cents a day, which is less than a cup of coffee. I think that's, that was one of our, our, our very rough numbers that, that we looked at. And then, you know, that's a cup of coffee every day for thirty years. That's, that's the investment. But I, I would tend to agree that we need to look at this closer. The commissioners need to get with the architect and just one thing is important, if you don't mind me noting. The phasing with this job is very, very, this project is very important. And that's the modernization piece where a brand-new building, standalone building would be built. And you can, you can see it here. That building essentially, when it's complete and there's certificates of compliance and occupancy issued, that building can operate on its own. And then we can look to renovate the nineteen seventy nine and nineteen fifty four buildings. Okay? If we wanted to perhaps, as an option, revisit building the firehouses standalone with everything in it and then revisiting the older buildings, that's something that the board should really discuss.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We have to look at the project. We have to, like I said, there's things here that we don't necessarily need tomorrow.
Everything in his presentation showed, to my recollection, on the first floor. And that's, that's urgent stuff.
Well, on the second floor
That's, that's why the first floor, that, that's why I say the first floor has to be built. It has to be built just the way it has it. It has to have the decon, it has to have the showers, it has to have the turnout gear room. It has to have the hose, it has to have all the glue rooms.
I believe, in my opinion, we need a second floor as well. We need, we need to provide all of the functional requirements that a fire department would need to house, feed, train, they need a place to workout. All of those things. I, in my opinion, my view is we need the entire new firehouse built, first and second floor. If we wanted dispense with and worry about the older buildings later, I might be able to deal with that. And, and, and that's just my view. I'd love to hear from Commissioner Weddle and, and Ed and everyone else on it. I think it's important.
I correct and wrong it, but I think before we got into this, we had it to ten million? The, the building?
I wouldn't go throwing around numbers because numbers were thrown around for almost three and a half years.
But, but when we lost and the new boards started throwing things around and they eliminated stuff, which some of it shouldn't have been eliminated. But I mean, we were trying everything we could do just to get that building alone. We not touched this.
I think it's, I think it's being short-sighted, not building an entire building with, with all of the functional requirements and all the needs in, 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 in one job. I, I think, I think that would be short-sighted.
Hey, Terry?
Yes?
Just a little, I want to add to your discussion as you consider what you may or may not do. It's, it's very critical with your, to maintain your site plan approval that you would build if, if you weren't going to do something on the second floor that, you know, you build the shell at least. Or if you weren't going to do something on the inside of the building, that the exterior of the building has to be built along with all of the site improvements in order to close out your site plan. And if there's something you might be considering to reduce the project, which I think Bob already touched on that, you know, he's got everything that you need in that limited space that you have. And there's not much to take away from that floor area. But if you were to come back with a smaller building for some reason, that's going to throw you back into site plan approval again and which is, has both time and money implications related to it, so.
I, I don't, no, I don't believe this board is going backwards. The footprint, what's been approved, the, that's, that's solid. We've been working on this for nineteen years. Yeah, got you, but
It's been discussed on and off by, just in case anybody had forgotten or not heard, I just wanted to get it out there.
Basically, what it comes down to is, we had to sit down and go over the plans. We had to not start from scratch, but we had to look at what we had.
I would urge this body to build the new building with everything. And if, if there's any consideration, then we can forego the renovation until such time or we figure out a more creative way to finance the, the renovation.
Of the old sections?
Yes. But again, it's very important for the residents and, and the CLC to know that what you see in front of you is everything, all functional requirements thought, thought out over many, many years. And we know what the price is. Sixteen million nine hundred thousand dollars plus another quarter point. That's what it is today. So clearly, it's over seventeen million dollars today. And we, we, we can't wait any longer. Bob Mitchell made that abundantly clear to this body. We, we, we can't wait.
The longer we wait, the more it can cost.
Absolutely. And the longer we wait, it, it, it's just going to be, it's going to be difficult or it's going to be more difficult to sell to the residents of the Fire District. I would, I would urge, I would urge the body to have a conversations tonight about, at a minimum, considering everything I mentioned before, inflationary pressures, cost of goods, labor, material, energy prices and interest rates. And I consider this board tonight to have a discussion regarding hiring public relations assistants, finishing up our website, considering social media presence, setting up a date for referendum, designing at least two to three public engagements, sending out mailings and urging all the residents in the Fire District to vote.
One thing that I don't know if you mentioned, but this building, this design has future expansion built in from day one. So we already have an expansion capability. So we don't have to come back to the public in the future and ask for more. So this is a, this is an opportune time right now to strike.
Well, I guess I think we need to get the public relations. That's got to be right on top of the list. But we got to sit down, we had to pick the date and pick how many meetings we're going to have.
What's the board's position on the current cost of the sixteen million, not nine hundred thousand? I mean, I, I, I think we'd be short-sighted just to say we need to reduce the cost because there are some residents and you got to go for it. And we've got to go for it now. The trends are indicating it's not going to get any cheaper. So if we wanted, if, say, if, if we went for a referendum around seventeen million and we got it, well, then we're going to, we're going to, we're going to go for the whole project. If, if we're worried and we're just reducing the size and scope of the project in turn, and I'm not talking about footprint, then that's being short-sighted, it's just because we're worried. I would love to hear from Bob Mitchell on, Bob, how, how can we get our best bang for this buck? Is it value engineering? Is it performance contracting? Is it using creative ways and, and, and thinking outside the box? Is, is it really a fifteen million dollar project and we can find three million dollars worth of savings somewhere? These are the questions, body, this is, these are the questions this body is supposed to be asking right now.
You're at a particularly difficult moment in time because the economy is so unpredictable, you know? Four months ago or something like that, the conversation was COVID and it's going to end. Now the conversation's Ukraine and who knows what's going to happen. The, the one thing that's, the, the one thing you can count on is that the prices are going to go up. I mean, the, we, I remember, remember oh eight, oh nine, we tried to get clients to build in ten when the prices were down. It took that kind of an event to pull the prices down, but by three years later, they were back on the trajectory that they would have straight lined up if, if that drop had never happened. So, you know, just like with the, trying to time the stock market or something, you, if you had a strategy that was based on we're going to build this thing when the market, when, when the prices drop, odds are against you that you'll be at the right time at the right Odds are against you that you'll be at the right time at the right place for that to happen. So I think you just. You know, and people don't have to trust me when I say this because. They would think I have invested interest, but I've been doing this a long time and. There, you just have to do it now.
I agree. I think we should be going for as much as we can. Uh, perhaps value engineering or performance contracting, uh, i- i- trying to figure out where we can. Optimize. Uh, design and engineering considerations. But I, I think that we have to go for it, however, that's just my view. And um, I'm not going to make a motion on this. I, I, I was expecting tonight that we're going to have a robust discussion on some key things here and um. I don't know if that's going to happen here tonight. Yes.
I, I have some thoughts just as um, experience I've had with all the fire districts. Um, and then just other entities that that have, um, that I'm involved in. Um, I, you know, I can't speak to what it is that makes you feel like seventeen million is, is too much. Um, I'm assuming based on past experience, the last bond that, 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 you know, wasn't successful. Uh, I'm sure that has to, you know, play into to some of that. But I, I think, you know, uh, uh, seeing Bob's presentation and I, I've, um. Um, I've interacted with all the fire districts where Bob's involved and um. And and by far, that five or six minutes explanation. Um, was the best I've, I've heard. Um, but I would suggest to you guys that, that you hire professional uh, to, to assist you guys. You put your best foot forward um, with regard to um, uh, what you want and what's necessary. I think the school districts would do the same thing if, if, if that's what they were doing. Uh, may seem like a lot of money for a fire district, but, but, you know, isn't. Necessarily a lot of money for a school district, it all impacts the taxpayers the same way. Uh, but what I, I think might be useful is you guys go through your, your, your public process the best way you possibly can. With, with, you know, professional guidance and then you do some, some surveying before you actually do the, the bond. Um, there's a program called Survey Monkey that allows you to, to get the public to. Um, to give you some feedback on what it is you've been doing from a marketing perspective. And so you may consider going through your marketing process, getting some feedback. And um, you know, you might have an idea of where you might land with the bond. Uh, and I think that's, that's probably where you guys have a lot of trepidation is, you know, you're trying to read the tea leaves. And it's impossible, there's, there's really no good way to do it. Uh, but you, you know, I'm of the mind, a- and again, you know. It, it doesn't be me to be part of a project where, where it's going to fail or it's too much money for the public. I don't want to see taxes go up more than anybody else, I don't want to see it happen in my own town. Um, but I certainly recognize the necessity. Um, it seems to me when you're doing a capital project or any capital project, you don't want to do it multiple times. Uh, you probably don't want to go back to the public or, you know, till in, you know, five years or seven years or. Um. Um, but you know, I don't see how that's useful. But you, you know, it, it's just so hard to say whether that number is too much, there's no good way to, you, you don't know if it is or it isn't. Right, so you, you're saying, hey, should we shave off a couple million, but you don't know if it's going to, if fourteen's too much or seventeen's too much. I think you guys have to commit to. Uh, a- as you would do with any message or any campaign, this is what we need. But this is what we want and this is what we need, hopefully those are together, those are combined, you, you know, they're similar. Um, and you, you get that message out there the best way you can, I think the only thing, you know, I'm suggesting that's any different than what you guys are. You know, would do is. Um, I, I do think there are some methods of getting some feedback after you've gone through that process to get an idea. If it's going to fly. And 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 if there is, and that's something that, 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 you know, your marketing professional can help you with, I, I would suggest you do it. Um, you know, like I, I know if you just sent a, a, you know, a mailer out and said, what do you think? If they didn't see what Bob said, it all come back, no. Uh, you know, I think we could agree to that. Um, right, to me, that's obvious, right? So, so getting the message out there and it's not Bob's message per se, he just encapsulated it, it's your fire district message, right? Um, getting that out there, making sure that it gets seen. Um, I, I think that'll help you understand or have an idea. As to. Your chances of success. Um, but you know, I think you guys be helpful if, uh, you don't, you know, it's, you don't always all have to be on the same page. Um, but I, I think nineteen years in on a project. Um, that's at this point necessary, it's, it's not, you know, it's not a wish, it's something you guys need to do. Um, I think you should target a, 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 a date, get that professional guidance. If there's uh, methods of getting feedback, use every single one of them that you possibly can. And um, and I think that feedback is what you guys, you're going to need to get it. Um, I think it's going to be, you know, a, 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 a critical component. But I think you could do it, you could get it done, I mean, there's, you know, you could put surveys out on the internet, there's ways to, to, to get that information pretty quickly. Uh, but I wouldn't make any rash decisions about shaving costs or removing things unless you already know that they're non starters.
Well, we don't, don't.
You don't, right, so.
We, we don't, and and I, I think it would be short sighted. I, I, I am as concerned as, as anyone with the rising interest rates. Um, I've also received feedback from people in town is to go for. Go for the maximum build out, do it once. Uh, because the construction costs are not coming down. We already know they're rising to the tune of, Bob, I think you said, uh, four point three five percent a year in this area.
Well, I, I spoke to the estimator today and he thinks that the forecast for the next twelve months is six percent.
Six percent, there you go. So, um.
Seems like the wisest thing right now is to get a professional to give us a little guidance so we can get.
I don't disagree. So, uh. Again, we, we, we talked about the inflationary pressures, cost of goods, labor, materials, energy prices and interest rates. Have impacted greatly. Um, the potential uh, uh, cost of this project. We're totally engaged with our architect, engineer, legal advisor. And we also just got some great feedback from Michael LaGore here, uh, the council to the board. Um, I'm assuming because there, there was no objection or any comment on it, uh, uh, can I just poll? Uh, uh, the commissioners, are, are we in general agreement that? We need the public relations assistance pretty much right now, we need to develop our website, consider social media, right? Because I, I'm, I am not a fan of saying we need to go to Facebook because that could be disastrous. Um, if, if our public relations assistants. Uh, our professional indicates we need a social media presence and and they can manage it. Then I think that would be a, 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 a way to go. Um, we need to set a date for referendum in the future, I got to give um, uh, Commissioner Weddell some credit. Um, when we spoke about this back in uh, uh, January, he said. Don't say, uh, uh, end of spring or, or, or early summer because we don't make that date. That, that could be a little, uh, 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 not embarrassing, but, but it could speak to, uh. Improper planning, so um, w- we, we did talk about possibly. A date sometime in the fall. Um, in all practicality, I, I, I don't know if we're going to meet that. Um, but that's entirely, yes.
That's one reason why I think we need to get. Professional in here, so.
Hundred percent.
Because he'd be able to help us timing out, I mean.
Correct.
Us sitting here trying to time that ourselves. And we hire him and he goes, well, I can't do all that in this time period.
Right, I agree, agreed, so we, we, we would have to set it a date. We'd have to have several public engagements, I would urge, uh, uh, Bob to start, uh, uh, Bob from a. Mitchell associate to start thinking about um, the best presentations you've ever done. Because I know that this is what you do for a living at night. Um, and, and, uh, you've done a great job here tonight. Uh, and at previous, uh, uh, other presentations, but particularly tonight. You showed compelling reasons why we've got to get this done now. Um, and then again, uh. Three or four public engagements, uh, are two, two or three, I should say, and then designing the mailings. Uh, with uh, public relations assistants. And then again, um, and I just remind this, that this, the board, it's not our job to ask someone to vote yes or no. It's our job to get the information out and then urge everyone to vote. Uh, wh- whether that be an up or down. Uh, again, I, I'm absolutely convinced that this is a critical infrastructure project that's absolutely needed. It was demonstrated here tonight based on Bob's uh, presentation. Uh, and the fact that we've been working on this for nineteen years, uh, we've been toiling over it. Uh, we're, we're, we're committed to getting this, this project done. Uh, and it looks like, uh, perhaps in, in the coming months, we're going to make some headway. Uh, but I am extremely worried about some of the pressures that are affecting the cost of, of this project right now. Um, I will leave this for the rest of the commissioners to comment on before we wrap it up.
Do you need a motion that we proceed for a search for our new public relations person?
Um, we don't have to do that here today, yeah, we'll just keep this working, yeah. Um, in fact, we'll put that on the agenda for uh, uh, next, uh, uh, next regular meeting. Any other closing comments?
Definitely professional service.
Any final comments from any of the board members around the room? Robin, anything, did I forget anything, Robin?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you, we'll go, we'll go around the room, uh, Bob, do you have anything before we, uh, bring it to an end here?
No, lots, lots to think about, I look forward to helping.
Yes, thank, thank you so much, uh, Bob Mitchell, of, of Mitchell Associates Architects. Uh, Joseph, anything before we go?
Nope, just same as Bob, happy to help in any way I can.
Thank you very much, Joseph Montaferry from, uh, JMC, uh, Lynn. Yes, uh, n- n- nothing from Lynn Winek of, of, uh, Windows Marks, uh, thank you. Uh, again, I want to thank, uh, Mike LaGore from Hogan Rossi. Again, big shout out to Carrie from Newcastle Community Media Center, you're the best. Um, uh, thank you to all the members from the community liaison committee who attended. Uh, and, and, uh, this is a very important discussion that we've had here tonight. Future dates, next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April twenty first, twenty twenty two at seven P M. Regular meeting will be preceded by a work session at six thirty P M. Email any questions and concerns to the following email address, I'll spell phonetically, bravooscarfoxcharlie@. November Charlie Foxtrot Delta one dot org. Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you very much, everybody.